Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. Before we start this evening with the regular part of the agenda, we had a change in our agenda yesterday. Clifton, would you please explain?
Sure. Thank you. So, under Old Business Item PG 2322 SPA and GPP for Fair Housing of Connecticut LLC, that application that the public hearing closed on February 20th, 2024, I received yesterday a letter from the applicant withdrawing that application, so that will not be up for discussion tonight.
Okay, so everybody that's here for the Fair Housing of Connecticut, the 830G application, just to let you know, late yesterday, we received a letter withdrawing the application, so it will not be discussed this evening. And prior to that application being heard or discussed in any form, another legal advertisement will be published. I'm sorry for the inconvenience, given the time constraints, there was just no way to notify anyone of the situation. So, we appreciate all of the input that we got from so many of you, and regret the fact that you were inconvenienced by coming here this evening for something that was withdrawn yesterday. So, I'll just give a meeting, a minute for anybody to clear that wants to leave, and we'll commence the regular part of the agenda. The rest of the agenda is intact. Thank you, and I apologize again for the inconvenience. Okay, so, I'm Chuck Sheen, I'm the chairman. This is the regular meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission, and let the record reflect that it was called to order at 7:00 PM. We have all the regular members present here this evening, so there's no need to appoint alternates.
Andy's not here.
Oh, Andy, I apologize. Andy, I apologize, in your absence. Clifton, is Bennett next to be appointed?
Correct.
Okay. So Bennett, you're seated for this evening. We won't restate this, but he'll also be seated to act in Andy Meek's stead during the public hearings as well. Approval of the minutes, item three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1749 from February 20, 2024, as written and submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. There's a motion to approve minutes number 1749. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. No abstentions? Okay. Matter passes. Any public comment at this time? If anyone wants to make a public comment for the good of the order, you can approach the mic and make a statement. Hearing none. We'll move to reports, staff report. I'm sure you'll have something to say during each one of the action items. There's no report from the chair or anyone from the commission have anything for the good of the order? No? Okay. Zoning enforcement violations, sir. Clinton, anything that's outstanding that you care to comment on?
No. Any questions?
Okay. There's nothing for administrative review?
No.
Okay. So, we're skipping over item seven, it's been withdrawn, going to item eight, first public hearing by Cam Precious Memories Place Inc. Lynn, would you read the public ad, please?
Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulation of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice of this public hearing, which has been published twice in newspapers, having a substantial circulation within the town of Stonington. The first publication date was Friday, March 8, 2024, being not more than 15 or less than 10 days prior to the hearing. The second publication date was Friday, March 15, 2024, being not less than two days before the hearing. The newspapers in which these notices were published were The Sun and The New London Day. Today's public hearing is a continuation from the March 19, 2024, public hearing. Public hearing, PG 2401 SUP plus Cam Precious Memories Place Inc., special use permit application and coastal area management review for construction of a 1,158 square foot building addition to support an additional 20 students. This application is a modification to PG 1103 SUP plus CAM. Property is located at 168 Greemenville Ave Mystic, MBL 172-2-4. Property is located in the RA 40 and RM 15 zones.
Thank you, Lynn. Before we begin, sir, just the sort of order that we take things in here, the applicant will make a presentation, commissioners will ask questions, staff will issue its report, then it's open to the audience to speak either for or against, or just make a general comment. You will be given rebuttal time, as will everyone else, and we'll go back and forth with rebuttal until everybody's said their piece, and the public hearing will either be continued or closed and voted on this evening. So, if you'd just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Edward Wenke, that's W-E-N-K-E, Licensed Professional Engineer.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Before I start, just a little bit of housekeeping. I've got receipts from uncertified mailings that came in. We sent out six mailings, we got back five.
Thank you, sir.
So, as I said, I'm the engineer of record for this project. I've also been the original engineer of record for this project back in 2011. We designed the site back then. It's fair to say I'm 110% familiar with this site. Just real quick to recap, the site's about acre and three quarters. It is zoned RA, excuse me, RA 40 in the front and RM 15 in the back. Majority of the site is RA 40 in the front. The site is located in a CAM zone. It is not located in a flood zone. It's not located in any aquifer protection zone. And we are serviced by municipal sewer, municipal water. The building's existing, obviously, we're connected to all of that. Next door to the site, if I can move over here, and hopefully still be able to be heard, the back of the site, and the south side of the site, adjacent to the Denison Nature Center. Elm Grove Cemetery is located on this portion of the site on the north, that's undeveloped portion of the cemetery, so it's inactive. And then there's one single family residence in the front of the Greemenville Ave, up on the northwest corner. So, as you can see, we've got the existing building, it operates since 2011. The recreation area in the back, everything on this building, all set back and in buffers. The premise behind our proposal to you tonight is to try to increase the size of the building to address the community problem of not having enough qualified and high-quality available child daycare. Chris Eckersley, the owner of Precious Memories Place and the owner of the property, is here with me, she's the applicant. She's been running this business at this particular location since 2011. She has a waiting list right now of over 350 people trying to find, you know, childcare. So, she approached us to try to find a place where we could actually expand this. We looked at a lot of different ways of designing this. Because of the actual use and because of the zones, we have buffer issues to deal with, and that was part of the constraints of expanding the building to the north, which is where we really wanted to go. But what we actually ended up proposing, which is what's before you tonight, is adding two wing additions, both of them are 16 by 24-foot, single-story additions, coming off the front of the building, that's the west side of the building. On this colored version here, this is a grove shot of closure, there are four of them, with this standing office and this standing office right here, with two small additions being planned off the front of the building. Excuse me. Each addition is going to be one classroom apiece. So currently, right now, we have 120 students enrolled in the school, and also as part of our original special use permits with you previously. We're proposing 10 new students for each one of those classrooms, so a net growth, a net increase of 20 new students for this site. So, we've got, this proposal includes the building construction of those two wings. We're going to connect the front porch, just to make it architecturally work, in addition to giving us access back and forth on those classrooms. We're going to reconstruct the ADA ramp that comes off the front sidewalk, and we're going to increase the parking by five additional spaces. Those five spaces are located right here and right there. So, if you're all familiar with the site, I'm sure you may be. The driveway comes in, and horseshoes around it comes back out, which is where the new car spaces are. Currently, right now, there's 24 spaces that serve 120 students that are there, that all meet zoning criteria. The additional five spaces keeps us in compliance, we're going to end up with a net total of 29 spaces on the site. So, that is the premise behind the actual site work, it's actually quite minimal on this. We do have some increases in impervious surface, they're minor. Gross increase in impervious surface is about 8%, and about half of that is the pavement, the other half is the new roofs. I'll talk about storm drainage in a second. We're not changing anything to do with domestic water service, with sewer service, in fact, there's not going to be new bathrooms installed on this, because we have adequate bathrooms in the existing building. The additions themselves are going to be wood frame structures, they're going to be gable roofs, and let me show you a picture of what the front elevation will look like. The existing building in the background, this is the existing front gable, the main entrance and the porch. This is the new addition on either side with the gable roofs, and there's a small connection porch that's going to run across the front. That is pretty much the extent of what we're proposing to build from a building standpoint. There'll be no full basements, there'll be crawl space, cross wall foundation. As I said, it's wood frame, it's fairly straightforward. Storm drainage on this was looked at by your town engineer, I've spoken with him about his comments, and I went ahead and I did a full storm drain study on this. We had done the original storm drain study on this, and I designed the original storm drain system. Explained to you what we currently have and what's in place. Parking lot basically drains by catch basins and pipes, and we ran it to a storm scepter, an STC 900, that was installed back in 2011. That's been maintained, we've just had it recently cleaned, had it recently inspected, it's operating in fine fashion. It's rated for a total suspended solid removal of about 92%, which meets your criteria. What we're going to put in there as far as additional drainage is basically the five parking spaces. It equates to about 930 square feet of additional paving. Both Chris Greenlaw, your town engineer and myself, both agree, it's such a minimal amount, it's not going to make a bunch of difference in terms of the water quality. However, that water coming from that additional paved area is going to be treated through that storm scepter, so water quality has been addressed adequately. As far as the roof drainage is concerned, we addressed that in terms of a recharge by adding underground infiltration for both wings on either side of the building. It's a small system, it's really nothing to get excited about. But this roof right here is going to drain in the north, we've got the storm drainage system here, this portion's going to drain in the south, we have the storm drainage system there. Both those systems have been designed to handle the one-inch increase in runoff, and has an overflow, and it's going to work just dandy. The town engineer has also agreed with me on that. So, the storm drainage issue is basically been addressed, and there's no outstanding storm drain issues. As I said, we're in a CAM zone, we're within 500 feet of a tidal wetland, but we're not within 100 feet of any of the coastal resources, that would be a problem. We don't have any freshwater wetlands on the site, there are freshwater wetlands off the site. In this area right here, that green area is freshwater wetlands. The storm drainage system that we had originally designed and approved through your commission comes down, down to the storm scepter here, pipes down to the level spread down here. This has all been constructed. This has all been basically maintained, and it's all in fine working condition. This proposal has no bearing on wetlands, we're not proposing to encroach, we have no activity even within the 100-foot upland review area. So, that's all set there. In the end, as I said, we're going to have an increase up to 140 gross students, and an additional five spaces to make 29 parking spaces. Should note that there's, to my knowledge, there's no history of any accidents or traffic problems associated with this driveway since it's been constructed, so, and the traffic flow works very well during pickoff, pickup and drop off, excuse me, drop off and pickup to the, I was going to say delivery, but you don't do that with children. So anyways, the driveway does work well. And that's basically it, this is a very simple proposal, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Have you heard from the police commission? In our paperwork, you hadn't.
No, what happened was, the police commission actually was going to meet and discuss this with us last Thursday, actually flew up from Florida just to make that meeting, and as I got back to the airport, I found out, oh my God, it's been, they postponed it to the 28th. So, they have not reviewed this yet, but the reality of it is, I don't think they're going to find anything really earth-shattering on this. But we have agreed, and we talked with Cliff about it, they're going to be meeting again on the 28th after this meeting. Any kind of stipulations that they may want to include in this, we'll be born happy to address. That's not a problem.
And this doesn't trip into the DOT, does it, Connecticut? Doesn't generate that kind of traffic?
No.
It doesn't, no. We're not proposing any improvements within the state right of way.
Anyone else with any questions? Just a few, I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead.
The existing parking, how is it going with that so far, the 24 spots? Is that enough for the existing space?
Yeah, it's been operating just fine since 2011, it's not been a problem.
And is that normal, you know, each wing, 10 kids? Is that a standard for a daycare?
What happens is you allocate X number of square feet per child per classroom, and that's how it works out for that particular square footage on each wing. So, and you'll find that every classroom that's within the building itself basically is 10 kids. That's accurate, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a few questions.
Sure.
I'm assuming that the traffic flow is, it comes in, and there's drop off in the front in the horseshoe driveway there?
There is drop off there, there are people that pull into the parking spaces and drop off as well.
Is there any ever a problem with vehicles queuing beyond the driveway in the drop off area into the area where they're head in parking?
Well, I'm sorry, where the admin parking is?
Where, no, where, yeah, where the admin parking is. Is there ever any problem with people backing out while there's vehicles queued to drop off people there?
Not to my knowledge, there's been no reported problems at all.
Last question is, normally, the town engineer requires some form of detention. I think in this case, he probably waived it because of the adjacent wetland. Is that the reason there was no detention with the original?
No, no. The reason why we didn't have detention is when we did the original storm drainage design, we did the full-blown watershed analysis on this. This property is basically at the very bottom of the overland watershed.
Okay, fine.
We're very close.
So, you let it peak?
We want to release that before the rest of the watershed peaks.
And what model did you use to model the stormwater?
The rational method for the localized, we did TR 20 for the overall watershed.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions. Anyone else? Okay.
Chuck, just a quick question. You mentioned bathrooms with the additional space, would they use the same bathrooms that you have now? Is that going, just looking at the plan, would they walk through other classrooms?
Yeah, what's going to happen, it's a good question. What's going to happen with these, first of all, like I said, we're not doing additional bathrooms, there are bathrooms on that floor. In the classrooms that are right next to the parade here and right here. These rooms are not going to be closed off to the other classrooms, they're going to have basically a wall divider. So, they're going to open them up, and they can close them up, but basically, they're going to be, you know, be able to walk through the classrooms, no problem to get from one point to the other. Also, keep in mind, the southernmost wing is going to be all infants, and they don't walk to bathrooms, so. But yeah, that's how that's going to work.
Any other commissioners have questions? Staff report?
The only thing worth noting, Ben already touched upon it, is that this hasn't been reviewed by the police commission, so if there was an additional stipulation beyond the two that are in here, that would be sufficient to meet the needs of the police commission when they review on the 28th.
No other comments? Anyone have any questions, Clifton? Okay, hearing none. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on this application, I'm sure you're disappointed about that.
I am, I was looking forward to that.
But I have to ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak, either for or against, or make a general comment on this application. Ask one more time, anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. What's the commission's pleasure on this public hearing?
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, we need to close the public hearing, and then we can proceed with our votes, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ryan. I have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. No abstentions? Matter passes. So, what is the commission's pleasure on this matter?
Just a quick question for, I guess we can make the stipulations as part of the overall, can we make the three decisions together at once, Clifton, and then, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as submitted, I'd like to make a further motion to approve the waivers requested, to approve the coastal CAM application, and to approve the special use permit application with the following three stipulations. First, the final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Two, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. And number three, that any comments or recommendations raised by the meeting with the police department to be held on March 28th would be satisfactorily addressed.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, just one question of Clifton, can we do all three in one motion? We can.
Yes.
Okay, as stipulated by Ryan, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ed. The next item on the agenda is the application of St. Edmund's. And Lynn, would you read the public hearing announcement, please? Incidentally, before Lynn reads, if you would like to speak, there is a sign-up sheet. If you happen to miss it and you want to speak, I'll make sure you get an opportunity, but it would help us if you would sign up if you'd like to speak.
PG 2402 SPA and CAM, St. Edmund of Connecticut Inc., site plan application and coastal area management review for the construction of a 6,600 square feet building at St. Edmund of Connecticut on Ender's Island. Proposal also includes the demolition of existing structures on campus and associated site improvements. The property is located at 1 Ender's Island Mystic, MBL 178-1-1. Property is located in the RC 120 zone.
Is there anyone here to represent St. Edmund's Retreat? Our rules, by the way, are the same for this public hearing as they were for the last. The applicant will present, commission will ask questions, staff will report, and then we'll take speakers in the order that they've signed up for or against. Everyone has an opportunity for rebuttal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Attorney Rob Avina, representing the applicant tonight on the application. With us tonight is Father Tom Hoare, who is the director at St. Ender's organization, Kevin Miller, who's on the committee, Andrew Woodstock with the building committee, and our staff that's going to be presenting tonight, Julie Bartlett, who's the architect, Matt Stephan, who is the civil engineer, is our engineering architect team, and Rachel Salz is also here, who is part of the landscape design team. We're pleased to be here tonight, obviously, to present our application. We were in front of the architectural board, just recently went through the architectural design with them, as Clifton has noted in his report, and we were successful there. They had one concern that we'll be addressing regarding the landscaping over by the chapel, and we'll explain a little bit about, more about that tonight. We'd like to, again, stress that what we are presenting tonight is a site plan. We understand and appreciate that under the statute, the commission is certainly eligible to hold a public hearing in regard to any site plan. And so, we are endeavoring, and as we've always worked very hard on this project for over a year, with the staff, to comply with the site plan regulations of the town of Stonington. We are not here tonight to ask for any expansion of any of the non-conforming uses that are presently on the island. We're not here to create any greater non-conformities either of use or structure. That is not the purpose of tonight's presentation or our application. We are looking to do some renovations, well-needed and necessary renovations on the island, and present what we think is a very exciting building replacement on the island that takes away some of the non-conformities that are already existing and reduces them. So, we are hoping to go in the right direction here for the island itself, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But for tonight, I'd like to open with our architect, give you the overview, which we have submitted, but she, Julie, will start to walk you through that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am going to try to connect this. As Rob mentioned, we're here to present the Canyon Cottage at St. Edmund's Retreat on Ender's Island. As many of you know, this facility has been a center of worship and recovery for a variety of, a variety of people for many, many years. This is the existing site plan, and I wanted to just, as many of you have probably already been to the island, I wanted to orient folks who have not. As you come across the causeway from the north side of the island, you approach it with the visitor, the parking to the east, and the majority of the buildings to the west of the island, it, with the main building being the Ender's House at the end. And to the right here, we are showing a handful of the existing structures, photographs of the existing structures on the property. Angel Hall is the first building you sort of see, which was an original horse barn. It's actually one of the buildings that we are planning on removing from the property in order to see the children. in order to see the chapel behind, that was built almost two decades ago. And then the maintenance building in the bottom west, southwest portion of the island is the other building that we're planning on demolishing in order to construct the Kenyon Cottage. So this next plan sort of shows the, the structures in red that we'll be demolishing, including a handful of unused and underutilized sheds on the island as well. And our proposed site plan shows the removal of these, along with the proposed new Kenyon Cottage. And a big part of the reason for the proposal of this structure is for a centered place for our recover, the recovery residence for the St. Edmund Retreat Center. Currently, this use exists on the island, however, it's scattered, and there's not one centralized place for all of the residents to have a place to heal and recover. In fact, many of them are actually in the central buildings that you walk past as you approach the island, giving them not very much privacy and seclusion. So creating a new structure that is also offering ADA accessibility and a space for programs such as community-based AA meetings and other, and other programs that the, the island offers to more than just their residents, gives folks an opportunity to heal and recover in a more private and respectful opportunity. So, with that, I am going to turn it over for site plan-related topics to our, our Civil Engineer, Matt, and I'll, I'll be back to talk specifically about the cottage from the architecture perspective.
Good evening. As Robert said, my name is Matt Stephan. I'm a Civil Engineer for the project, and I'm just going to walk everyone through the, the site plan portion, and then after that, we'll get back to Julie and talk more about the building. Uh, so. So, why are we here tonight? We are here to respectfully request the Type 2 Site Plan approval under your zoning regulations, and I want to cover the design objectives that we had for the site and the design as we worked through it. And the first one is to enhance the campus experience. So what we're trying to do is by taking down two older buildings and putting a new one, we're really trying to make sure that the site as well blends into everything that the island stands for. There's lots of nice landscaping on the island currently. It's open to the public, and people are allowed to visit and walk their paths, see everything. So that was really our main focus with the site design, was to try to incorporate into that and blend very seamlessly into the existing island, which has been in place for many years. And then following through with that as well, as I mentioned, it's open to the public, we really want to improve the site accessibility. So try and update the new building for ADA codes, provide accessible parking spaces, concrete sidewalks that are navigable per ADA standards. And the final objective was to really minimize our impacts and disturbance. We wanted to make sure the construction kept a very tight area of disturbance, and it didn't extend further out into the non-infringement zones when possible, close to the seawall, trying to really keep things tight and minimize all impacts and disturbance to prevent erosion and long-term water quality issues, things like that. So for my Civil Engineering piece here, we're going to walk you through the overall site very briefly. I'm going to talk about the erosion and sedimentation control, get a little more in-depth into some of the proposed improvements, talk about the lighting for a little bit, and then I'll hand it off to our Landscape Architect to talk you through the landscaping. So just a very brief aerial image here to orient everyone. North is to the left, you can see access from Mason's Island on Yacht Club Road there to the northwest, and the big orange circle there is where the, the existing building will be demolished and the new building is going to be proposed. So we are in the RC 120 zone, and the goal here is to remove the maintenance building that's shown here in the pinkish-orange color, kind of a U shape. We certainly want to emphasize that that building is currently located not only in the non-infringement zone, but in the FEMA Zone AE. So a big part of the goal was for the new building, which is shown in green, to be outside of both of those zones, and that was probably the single biggest design goal for the project. As Robert mentioned, we are not proposing any changes to the existing programming or operations for the site, and you can see just below there in the green, we're also going to be renovating the onsite septic system as well for some much-needed updates and additional benefit to the, the campus. And just moving north now to Angel Hall, this just quickly shows, that's the area of the building, as well as a plaza area that will be demolished, and the intent is just to restore that area as lawn. And similar to the previous building, you can see how there is a significant portion of it within the FEMA flood zone. So to talk about erosion and sedimentation control during construction, the plan is designed in accordance with the Connecticut Erosion Control Guidelines. We're providing silt fence barrier and soil stockpile areas to protect runoff from entering, you know, leaving the site or anything like that. We have anti-tracking pads for construction entrances, helps remove all the, the silt and grit from tires before it tracks onto the roadway. So these are all the best practices that we like to use during construction, and any areas that are disturbed will be loamed and seeded until they reach stabilization. And then we have a similar concept up here on the north side, so you can see there's also some perimeter silt fence during the demolition operations, again, an anti-tracking pad, and as I mentioned, areas that are disturbed or where buildings are removed will be restored with, with lawn. So, zooming in now a little bit to look at the Kenyon Cottage building more explicitly, it is a new two-story building. It will have site walkways and parking immediately adjacent to it. We're really trying to meet those first two goals that I mentioned in the beginning, so we really want it to blend in seamlessly. You can see there's a walk across the, it's near the top of the page, it would be to the east of the building, that runs through the existing grape arbors, and it also connects with the, the existing patio outside of the Ender's House. So it will really blend in very nicely. Everything is flush and ADA accessible. Over to the north on the left of the page, we are providing some formalized parking spaces. One of them will be a van-accessible space in order to continue to meet the goals. And then the west side of the building, in the yellow there, you can see we're proposing a, a small patio area with some lawn furniture. We have some examples on the, on the plan here, and it also have a decorative seating wall. And then back on the north side here, you can see the area where we're proposing to put grass. The blue square represents two existing handicap spaces in the gravel lot, so those are currently signed for accessible parking and will remain so. One thing I did want to mention that's not shown on this plan is, one of the comments that came out of the Architectural Review Meeting last week was, they wanted to see some type of path from this parking to the chapel, so we are certainly amenable to that and are going to be providing a permeable paver path essentially from that lot to the road, and then following parallel to the road to provide that connectivity with the chapel. And then that will probably have some additional landscaping along the back as well. So coming back to the Kenyon Cottage from more of the Civil Engineering perspective here, this is the Grading Drainage and Utilities Plan. As I mentioned, the building is going to be served by onsite septic, which we are working on renovating. There's additional available onsite utilities such as water, electric, telecommunications. What we're going to do with stormwater is we're going to be reducing the runoff volume through reduction in impervious area, as well as some disconnection of impervious area as well. The current site is basically in existing, one big island of pavement, one big building. This splits it up a little bit more, it reduces that impervious, and that will also help to address water quality concerns as well. And additionally, in that portion of orange there, we're going to be capturing that, that area of roof and harvesting it, and that will be recycled on the site for irrigation for the landscaping. And then you can see we have a proposed driveway to the south of the building. That's going to be gravel. It's currently pavement now, so what we're going to replace it with will be a more permeable surface. It is pitched from the building back towards the edge of the site, the idea being if water ever gets its way there to the basement, which is for storage only, it will drain, nothing will be trapped, gets inside of the building, so it is pitched back to the south there. So this is the photometrics plan. The, the intent behind the photometrics plan is we really want to focus on safety for ingress and egress. So all the lighting, all the lighting fixtures are, you know, full cutoff, dark sky compliant, extremely low light spillage, you can tell from the photometrics readouts here, even less than 25 feet away from the building, we're already at zero lumens. So it's really not going to create very much light at all, and the main focus is just to make sure that folks aren't tripping or anything like that during those winter months when it gets dark early and that kind of thing. And this is just an example plan showing the various lighting fixtures that we're going to be proposing and where they're located. You can see we have some lit bollards along the parking and the walkway over to the, the east of the building, adjacent to the, the Ender's House patio. And then we have various styles of sconces along the outside of the building to help illuminate those outer areas. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel, our Landscape Architect, and she'll walk you through the landscape design. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Salz, I'm with BSC Group, I work with Matt. I'm the Landscape Architect for this project, and I was working closely with the team. I want to just bring you back to a little bit of context for the rest of the site. And this is actually a really good image here. We can see that we have our tree-lined entrance here, that leads us into the island. This is really where the majority of the gardens are, and then, again, this is our site. So what we want to be doing is speaking a lot to what is already on-site, and those are gardens, so very flowery, coastal, that's what we're aiming for here. And also to pick up on some of the architectural features and the existing site features, one of the main things that we really, again, as Matt mentioned, wanted to preserve was the large arbors. So those are located to the front of the building here, if you can see that. Um, so one of the major concerns with arbors is that we don't want to shade those out too much, so I haven't included any large trees at the front of the building. That's something that you might typically see. That's really the purpose for that. What we have done instead is really included a couple of evergreen trees to help locate, you know, anchor, if you will, the corners of those buildings, of the building here. And then we're adding a few larger trees, larger shade trees to the back of the building, and really these ones over here. And again, I like to stress, there are a lot of utilities in this area, so as a Landscape Architect, I love adding trees to site plans, but these are really as many trees as I feel is appropriate for the area. One of the things that I wanted to do was add a few trees back here to help soften any view from the west. And, and really just like make this as though it was always here. So, again, I'll just touch on a couple of little things here. We're going to have this patio area, and I've concentrated on adding coastal plants, beach plums, we, I have mountain mint in there, things that you'll see in many coastal-style gardens. And again, non-invasive, wide variety to speak to the wide variety of the garden, and general foundation plants, grasses. And these are just a few images, just to give you a flavor of what I'm going for. The, the one over here with the wall and the shrubs in front of the wall, the same kind of feeling in here, and then just really nice light touch of flowers in front of the building. This is actually an image from Ender's Island, so I wanted to include that as well. And that's all I have, so I'll pass it back to Julie.
Thank you. The pictures are helpful, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel and Matt. All right, so, in, here is the, here I am to talk about the, the building itself. So as both Matt and Rachel mentioned, the, the structure is located very close in proximity to the existing Ender's House, and that is a big part of the intended design of our proposed structure. So we wanted to respond to the angle of it on the island, so you can see that a portion, while it is sort of a bent boomerang shape, a portion of it is responsive to the angle of the Ender's House. And we wanted to also, as Rachel mentioned, be respectful of those arbors that you can sort of see here as well. So, while also staying inside of, or outside of, the infringement zone, so we were improving that non-conformity as well. Moving to the plans, so the ground floor plan shows it, we are, while we are adjacent and very close to the Ender's House, there is the landscaping buffer sort of separating the two, so you would walk around that landscaping buffer into this sort of joint between, in the building, that offers a visual connection to the ocean behind with some glazed storefront. But then, once you're in this bridge, quote unquote, that is not a bridge, you could enter into a small lobby into the resident, dedicated recovery residence zone, or on the opposite side, on the south side, into a program room, which is relocating the program room that is currently in Angel Hall that is being proposed to be demolished. Within the recovery residence zone, there will be a small fitness and study space, both of which are, are existing uses in other structures on the island, and 12 bedrooms, one resident assistant unit, and a studio apartment that, as well as an ADA compliant unit and ADA compliant restrooms on the ground floor, providing two stairs to a second floor that steps in a little bit. You can see the shed, the, the roof of the first floor below here, so the building steps in at the second floor, and you start to see some of these bays that are projecting on the east and west facades as well, offering some, some movement in the, the facade. This second floor also, with the bend in the angle, offers a small reading nook for our residents as well. Basement is just storage as previously mentioned. From a architecture, exterior architecture perspective, as mentioned, we wanted to pull a lot from the existing Ender's House, respond to the stone, the stucco, the red roof without mimicking the red roof or without mimicking the architecture on the island. So here's some other inspiration imagery that helped also inform that connector that we are, that I previously mentioned as well. Some of the materials that we're talking about here are a stone veneer at the lower portion, a stucco to respond to the color of the existing Ender's. That stone veneer is meant to be a more organic, natural-looking stone, not a linear stone. The site wall might be out of a more linear stone, that would be in similar color and context to the veneer on the building. The intent is to be a very sustainable building as well. Proposed construction type is an insulated concrete form, which has, is very thermally sound, as well as using solar roof tiles, a Tesla solar roof tile in as much possibility as we can. Where we cannot use that, we will be using an asphalt gray shingle to try to match that. When we first started studying this, this initial concept view, sort of showing what the island looks like from the ocean with the existing maintenance building on the left image, and on the right is what the proposed structure would be, an initial concept sketch, improving the view from the ocean. And then this is our proposed sketch from the Ender's House looking towards the ocean as to what this building would be. So as I mentioned, we wanted stone to be at the base of the building without dominating the structure, so honoring and, and sort of pulling homage from the Ender's House without trying to compete with it. We've pulled, we've sort of varied our water table height in a couple of different spots to, again, offer some interest in the facade, pulling the red from the roof of the building, but not mimicking it on our roof by introducing it in the trim of the structure of the, of the roof, in the windows, in the bracketry, and then, and then you'll see sort of the, the, the clay rooftop, the solar roof tiles are something we're looking to use in as often as possible. As we further developed from that sketch, here's our proposed architectural elevations. These are flattened, so you don't see the skew in the angle of the building. And, and just sort of articulating what I just previously mentioned before, you can see the glazed storefront. the glazed storefront in that connector that you would see through to the ocean beyond. And here you can sort of see in the elevation on the bottom portion, the site wall would be right where my hand is. We're sort of cutting through the site wall right now in this elevation, and you see the grade dropping down to where that lowered gravel driveway would be to the lower basement access. And here's a good elevation to sort of describe that as well, the upper portion. So as a reminder, again, we really tried to pull from the context of the island, the stone, the stucco, the red, respecting a campus-like feel with gardens and landscape and multiple buildings on one campus, one island, something that we actually talked about with the design review board last week. And the two structures that we are demolishing are Angel Hall and the maintenance building, as mentioned previously. And we do feel that our proposed design does sort of fall in context with the other structures on the island. That's all I have to say, Robert, unless you want to come back up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we have our questions at the end of the presentation?
Are they done?
No.
I think you want to hold off till the end? Obviously, we have a lot of questions for, I think, everybody on the team. Okay.
Just a couple of housekeeping issues. So I should give these to Clifton. We have two of the three green cards returned. And we have the tracking that it was delivered on the third one. We just don't see that back recovered or rebuilt.
Thank you, sir.
We received all three back. We certainly appreciate everyone here tonight, and we want, we want the public to speak. We will certainly return and, you know, answer questions as you see fit and certainly do it now if you like, and then we'll, some rebuttal on some of the issues that came in the last 24 hours or so, which we...
We're anxious to hear from the public also, but we have some questions ourselves. We're going to have a staff report, and then we'll turn it over to the public. You will definitely be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Thank you.
So I'd like to introduce Father Tom Hore, just to introduce tonight our leader. And he'll, he'll hold off for later, so go ahead.
Good evening, Father. Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, so open it up to the commission. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure who to address it to, I guess the architect. On sheet C-5.1. There is something I've never heard of before, and I'm a layman at this, but maybe a layer cake, is it?
Yes.
I'm just curious, what is that? That's with sawdust?
Yeah, that's correct. I can, you want me to go into a little detail about it?
Please.
Sure. So a big part of the septic system renovation that the island is undergoing is they're really trying to be extremely proactive and good stewards of the environment. You know, I just want to say that there's absolutely no requirement from the public, the Department of Public Health manual that requires them to do this. So they're really going above and beyond and spending that extra money, putting that extra effort in, just, you know, to be good stewards of the environment. So what they're proposing to do with the septic, rather than a more conventional, you know, concrete gallery or something like that, is they're using one of these layer cake systems. And the idea is it's a thick section of imported engineered media. The first part is the traditional septic sand, and then below that is a blend of sawdust and septic sand. And so the idea is, as the effluent percolates through that layer, the carbon in the sawdust actually reacts with that effluent, and it converts the dissolved nitrogen in the effluent into nitrogen gas, which then releases up. So it's essentially a passive denitrification system.
What is the lifespan of that system?
Yeah, about 20 years.
20 years. And what is the select fill? Is that what you were referring to earlier?
Yes, that's, that's just traditional septic sand used in septic systems, basically every septic system in Connecticut.
Okay. And then, and then this other drawing, I guess, is the percolation layout, all these, the grid system, that's your drip system?
Yes, that's right. That's, that's how the effluent gets into the layer cake media.
And then, I don't see any roof drains on the main building. Do all the, all the roof drains go into this stormwater collection in the basement?
Yes, I believe there's, there's a, there's a perimeter drain for the foundation drain, and then we have a collector around the building as well that will tie directly into those drains.
Is there a cistern in the basement?
There would likely be some gutters and downspouts designed into the, into the structure at the, at the two ends that would tie into this stormwater system.
It just wasn't clear on the drawing how that...
Is that for the whole building or just the, the most subtly section of the building? I thought it was only the portion that you showed in orange was going to be collected.
Correct. The remainder would be percolated into the...
Directly piped.
Well, directly collected and percolated into the ground? Is that, is that what...
No, it'll be, it'll be collected by a pipe and discharged.
Discharged where?
It's shown on...
The plans that we have are like microscopic, so it's...
Okay.
It may be shown on the plans if you could just, you know, I see a roof drain on here, but it's impossible to read.
Okay.
I think it's on sheet C-3.1. C-3.1. Rating drainage and utilities plan. You can see a foundation drain outlet and several other drains that look like they daylight on-site, as opposed to going into an infiltration system.
Yes, so it's, it's not shown on this plan, but as Julie indicated, there will be downspouts with a collector pipe that will be piped into the yard drains that are in the front yard. And then the portion that's hatched on the roof, that will be collected to a cistern located in the basement for the rainwater recycling.
So it's only the hatched portion that gets collected in a...
That's right.
Rainwater system, like?
Exactly.
Okay.
If I can ask...
Next question?
Thank you.
I'm just actually curious, because I noticed here it says proposed rain flow 500-gallon complete above-ground rainwater collection system. So is that part of the building or is it on top of the roof?
It's a, it'll be a cistern located in the basement. So it's basically sized, it's sized based on the runoff generated in that portion of the roof that we're collecting. And that was sized per the 2024 Water Quality Manual.
Okay.
I just have two last, two more questions for the architect. You had mentioned there were 12 bedrooms? I counted 15.
There's a, there's an ADA bedroom.
Yep.
12 regular bedrooms, an apartment, and a resident assistant unit.
Total, 15 beds.
Yeah, 15.
Correct. 12 plus one, 12 plus those other, those other bedrooms.
So a total of 15.
Total of 15. Correct. I'm sorry if I misled you. That was not...
One last question on the drawing.
All relocated from other beds on property.
Understood.
Okay.
In one of these drawings, it shows parking, I think it says 52 spaces. And just a few weeks ago, we had seawall renovation. And as my memory was, there were 27 listed on that drawing.
Yeah, I don't know where 52 came from.
Well, I don't know where the 52 came from. So I'm a little confused that we had a drawing a couple of weeks ago that said 27.
No, no, I don't know where 52 came from, so I'm going to ask...
Sure. We, we were going through several design phases as we looked at the parking, because one of the objects was perhaps in a future renovation, that we would put some of the septic system into the parking area. And we were trying to kind of calculate, and I said, "We can't do it, because we need every space that we already have. Whatever that space is non-conforming, we can't injure it. We can't limit it by putting any structures." I guess it's a fancy system, and it would need sort of a berm. And so I said, "That's not the way we need to go." In reviewing it with staff, I said, "No, we need to show that we have our standard parking lot that everybody's familiar with, but of course, you know, the public is allowed out there, which is obviously under the coastal area management is terrific. And so we need to leave the parking lot." So what we're trying to demonstrate right now is that the parking lot is the same parking lot, and that our parking needs, when we finish this structure, are the same parking needs that we have now. So we would always come to you and say, "Oh, we're proposing something that's going to need more parking." But that's not the case. The beds that are on campus now are the same beds that will be there when we're finished. The residents that get dropped off and very rarely have cars will be the same type of residents that we have now. So it was really my decision to say, "No, we just need to just leave the parking alone. We can't encroach on it, because that would take away what parking we do have." Now, back, back in the day when I was here with Nick Keppel and we, we got the approval for the new chapel, was when, one of the questions of this commission was, "Well, will you at least make sure that the chapel is available to some parking in the morning for services?" And so we designated on that old plan about 27 spaces. We just kind of showed you that there is availability on that parking area, that if people show up for mass, you know, we sort of designated that that would always be open for them. And that's the same case now. We, we've never had a trouble with the coming and going to the public or the coming and going for mass in that general parking lot. So we're just going to leave it be, because tonight, there is nothing that we're suggesting that would change our day-to-day operations, other than creating a better environment with a better structure that's pulled back from the flood zone. So we're, we're working hard to get a better structure out there than, than the ones we have now. Otherwise, our uses are exactly the same. So that, that's the point of our presentation. You know, the, the last comment I would have on that, that I certainly will comment later, because I know we've, we've gotten in some attorney's comments in the last 24 hours, is that it is a terrific challenge for us and an exercise that we are still undergoing with staff's assistance, that we are trying to maintain our FAR that is currently on the island, that we met in 2003 with the chapel, that was reviewed in 2018 in the Vincent Report with Candace, and we want to get to that level of FAR compliance. There's no doubt about it. I'm a zoning attorney. I know that under site plan review, I've got to meet the requirements of the site plan. So we are still addressing the swap-outs that we are looking to do on the island in order to get our FIR in compliance. And I will address that a little bit later, you know, once the attorney gets to speak. But we, we're serious about this. We've been at it a year, and we sincerely want to keep everything the same so that we are not in any way inconveniencing anyone in order to improve the ability of the, of the mission of this wonderful place to continue. That's, that's the object of what we're trying to do, and we're not trying to increase or expand any activities or any buildings. That's, that's the goal. So I, I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll probably come back to that a little bit later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, sir? Ryan?
I have a couple. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you can go.
So there are a couple of things I just want to clarify. Looking at the proposed structure analysis, which is AO-2, page 8. So if I understood what you said correctly, that you were not adding any beds. So when I'm looking at the structure analysis, what I see is that the cottage that's being, the maintenance building has no beds, and the cottage that is being demolished has 12 beds. And then I go down, and I say proposed structure, and it says lodging 14 beds, program space, fitness, and studio apartment. And as you've explained, that's 15 altogether. So am I missing something? Three, three additional?
So I apologize, there's a chance this might not have been updated. There was a narrative that I, that was issued within, in conjunction with the site plan application, that described all of the beds on campus and all of the offices that are on campus. And as we demolish the Angel Hall, there's the program room, and there's offices and other uses that are getting displaced to the Ender's House, where there are beds in the Ender's House that are being now relocated, because there's some beds in the chapel. I'm sorry, there's beds in the Colby Cottage, the, Colby Cottage has beds, and there's offices being added to that. Admittedly, I don't have the document in front of me at this second, but it describes every shift of where uses are going by demolishing the maintenance facility. There's more than just maintenance. It was laundry. Sure.
There are 12 student beds, right? And they're right now scattered. There's 12 in Colby Cottage. There's a small apartment in the, we call the Old Chapel Building, which is where Sacred Art is. And then there's three, two bedrooms above my office in Ender's House. Those three bedrooms are going to be included in the Kenyon Cottage building. So, so they're just shifting beds, so they're, we're not increasing the number of beds on campus.
Okay, so the number of beds on campus remains 88?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Somewhere that should be stated clearly on here. There should be a matrix that identifies where the existing beds are, and it should add up to what, what is proposed, because you're going to, and I know the attorney was very careful in saying that you didn't want to change any use, because you are a non, at least you claim you are a non-conforming use. And that would change it.
Understood. Understood entirely, in that we, we did offer the narrative that does describe that.
Thank you.
And so we'll update that matrix.
Thank you, Father, for the additional details.
So I have a couple more questions.
Just to confirm, it is included in the original narrative, and that narrative dated February 13th, 2024. That was what was provided to the commission when the application was received at the meeting on the 20th. So that narrative does have that description laid out.
Thank you. Okay. But I do think it should be summarized in this table correctly. Okay. Which is absolutely fine. So then, I'm looking at the same table. And under the proposed structure, it says that the height is 22 feet and 11 inches. Then I go to page... 15. And I, I could be looking at this incorrectly, but does it say 45 feet and 11 inches?
From sea level. So our ground level is at 17.6. So you would take...
Okay.
Doing the math quickly, sorry.
So 45 and 17. Yep. Okay.
It's like it's 28.5, right? Isn't that what it says right above it?
Yeah. I'm, admittedly, I'm confused as to where we're looking at.
Again, it's just an inconsistency, and I want to make sure that we're right.
It's hard to read this, I agree. You're looking at A3-1, right? Page 15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The height is right, right above it. It actually, very small print, but the, you have to add the two numbers. The height from ground floor to, to top of ridge is...
17.4 and 11...
27.4 and 11.1, so...
11.1.
So it's 28.5, right?
Right.
And that's a 30, 30-foot requirement, I think, you're correct.
Okay. It's just, once again, I just want to make sure we have consistency, because it says 22...
No, I agree.
11. Okay. So we've got that. Okay.
Appreciate that, sorry.
Nope, not, not at all. So then I, I just have a couple other questions. So the, the... So, um, the, the, the lighting. Now, could you just, I saw, I saw the, the pictures, which were really nice to, to put those, but could you just do kind of a comparison of what's currently, the lighting, the outside lighting of the current buildings compared to the outside lighting of the new structures? From, from the perspective of, uh, you know, um, the same type of lighting analysis?
So we don't know the exact fixtures that were installed. So photometric plan comes from light levels from a data, from a, the product, the light that we select. We can check it with light meters. That's something that I, I believe can occur. I've never done it, but I believe you can check the light levels from the existing lights on campus. But that's not some, we don't have the fixture data, so we would have to test it differently in order to do that comparison.
Okay.
So, um, are you, are you asking relative to light?
Just visibility.
Brightness?
Yeah. Visibility at night, et cetera, from, um, you know, because it's open. It's open to the water carries, et cetera. So I was just wondering if you had considered that or if you thought about that in comparison to what was currently there? Because you've been very clear that you're trying to have, to maintain kind of the same ambiance. You've, you've touched upon it from the architectural design. So I was wondering if you had done that with the lighting as well?
We haven't partic, done that yet, but we certainly can, can explore it and consider that.
Thank you. That's all I have now. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Lynn. Bennett? Any questions? Gary?
Ryan?
Oh, go ahead, Gary. I have a couple of strange ones. It said part of the reason to do this is privacy was mentioned a couple of times. I just, I mean, this is new to me. Is that helping the recovery process out?
Well, right now, the, where the majority of the folks in recovery live and where the AA meetings, the 12-set meetings are, they're at the front of the island where you come into the island. This will move it all back to the, kind of the private section of the island tucked up against the, the seawall and where the paths for people walking around away from the chapel, more in a, kind of a private kind of area. So it's moving it from the front to the back of the island.
And that helps in the recovery process?
Yeah. It keeps, uh, it keeps, um, people with, uh, who want to maintain their anonymity. That helps. Especially when people are new into recovery, they're very, very shy about, um, saying, you know, um, I'm in recovery. You know, um, I'm 34 years in recovery. When I first got into recovery and I was 10 years a priest, I didn't only kind of advertise that a lot. So I made sure I went to meetings where, you know, people didn't know me, you know. So that's, that is part of, uh, the kind of the milieu of the recovery community, yeah.
Thank you. And, um, the existing space where there's bedrooms on the main camp, is that all going to be administrative space then?
The, the building where, um, what we call Colby Cottage now, that will all be turned into offices. That's where the majority of those, um, 12 beds are. They'll move down. The, um, where the, uh, the little apartment, that'll be part of the Sacred Art Gallery and, um, and workshop inside. So, yeah, they'll, they'll be, um, turned in, from bedrooms into more productive administrative programming space.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Gary? No? Ryan?
Yes, if, if I may, and I'm not quite sure who can answer this, but I'm kind of curious because it did come up when we were talking about the seawall work and the restorations there, about the traffic coming in, construction vehicles, the amount of dust that would be raised. And I'm kind of curious about the timeline for this. If this was to go forward, what the timeline would be? Would it coincide with the seawall work? If so, how would that be coordinated? You're going to have a lot of vehicles going, you know, heavy vehicles going over and back. A lot of debris, from what I understand, you know, is going to be created, not just from this project, but also the seawall work. So I'd, I'd like to understand how that's coordinated or if that has been considered to be coordinated.
Absolutely. Um, the permitting has begun on the seawall and I believe the temporary bridge has been put in place, which is going to kind of shore up the, the causeway. Some pre-planning by the island has placed a lot of the stone that's going to be used for the riprap and to put into the seawall is already there so that, you know, less than having to bring, you know, rock onto the island. But we're going to let that project happen and that's going to be, you know, ongoing, you know, for the next period of time, whatever time they need. We don't intend to sort of be doubling up the projects and we'll work closely with staff to ensure that. Uh, there's, there's no need here until fall or even later than fall to begin the commencement of any of these activities if it's going to over, over disturb and, and, and create a problem with the seawall work. So we'll work out a construction schedule that's required as part of the site plan and, and use that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it? Yeah, that's my question.
Um, it's sort of a threshold question that I have and it's, it's this floor area ratio calculation. And the, I think the numerator and the fraction is, is defined fairly well in terms of the way you break down, uh, uh, you know, the proposed square footages, but the denominator is the, the area of the site. And, um, what we have represented in the application is a survey that wasn't done by BSC. I'm not sure why, uh, you know, uh, but it never, it never establishes the area over a land surveyor's seal. So, uh, where does the area come from? How is it calculated? And, uh, and I mean very specifically, was it to mean high water? Was it to the coastal jurisdiction line? Was it to some other line? And on what survey was that based?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll be back. We, we understand in working with staff that we have to be quite precise in this area. And we're now working with Keith Nielsen, who I think you might be familiar with, the Daco. And he had worked on just recently up to 2020.
Right. He had a very good survey.
Oh, he's, he's good. So in all the interactions of, of the different professionals, and I guess that's, that's my responsibility, we really need to get together with Keith and go over that same submission that he made with you folks. And he did a very careful analysis of the island. And we're going to use that. And we're going to be coming back to you and saying, okay, you know, we've, we've rectified that, we've updated our, our survey analysis and then go forward with the comparison on the FAR. So...
Okay, so that was an A2 survey and it was a land surveyor stamped. And that will, uh, will allow us, but do you know if they're using CJL coastal jurisdiction line or mean high water? Do you, do you know what the numbers that we're looking at here are based on?
I believe it's the 2.0 and, and that is if...
Okay, that's coastal jurisdiction line.
Yeah, if Clifford would help me here, but is that correct that Cliff, that we're working off the, the number that we need to use for that?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, whether it's mean high water, your surveyor will know, whether it's mean high water or whether it's coastal jurisdiction line. But, but it's a fundamental threshold issue on these documents because you're going right to the maximum. So, uh, so in order for us to act on this, we've got to have this broken out, you know, in, in a very granular way and that requires an A2 survey. So I, I think you got it. I have just a couple of other questions. The septic system is, um, is shown on sheet C21. This is probably for the civil engineer. Uh, and they show the proposed leaching area. I don't see anything here for a proposed reserve area.
Uh, we don't have a proposed, um, reserve area on the plans. Uh, they were reviewed and approved by Ledge Light Health.
So, so why isn't shown on the plans?
Uh, we don't, we just don't have a reserved area shown.
Okay. But, but there is a reserved area?
Well, there are several locations on site that can be utilized. We have, um, there is an existing one that is currently served over on, it's not shown on the plans, but it's over to the southeast side of the island. So that is where the existing system is. So, uh, that would be a potential second location.
So rather than a potential location, I think what we'd like to see is a reserve area designated on the plans. And if you could add that to the plans.
Okay.
Uh, when you're, you know, addressing the survey issue, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Um, there was another question by, um, our flood consultant that talked about fill in the VE zone, the wave action zone. And, uh, that isn't shown on the plans and, uh, it seemed to be a major issue for them. So while you're at it, uh, I think you ought to add, uh, it can be done as an inset in the plans, um, an inset that shows the wave action area and attest to the fact that there's no fill. I'm assuming there's no fill in it.
Yeah, we did receive that comment and, um, we will come back to, come back to you with the show.
Okay, so it'll be addressed, it'll be addressed on the plans.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And, uh, and the other issue that we had talked about previously, and I just want to make sure it's on the record, is, um, you know, it seems like you've worked out in a very granular way the uses, uh, so that, Bennett appreciated Father's explanation, which was very good. Um, but, but I think that, that the movement of all the square footages and uses ought to be established, uh, as Lynn was alluding to, so that we see that, that before and after picture is exactly the same. Uh, because you can't change a non-conforming use. You can't expand it. You can't, you can't do anything with it. You got to keep it the same. I, I know your lawyer understands that. So you know what I'm looking for and that has to be on the documents as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, uh, with regard to phasing, um, I, I know the, uh, the previous plan that we had in front of us from Daco had a very succinct phasing plan. And because it does, I think we need to see the phasing of this project and what activities, you know, might occur concurrently with that project. So, so the, the phasing plan for the, uh, the seawall protection project has to be integrated with a phasing plan for yourselves and that has to be presented to the board. So when we act, we need to see a phasing plan.
Okay. Sure.
And, uh, I echo the concerns, uh, that Ryan spoke to with regard to noise during construction, uh, if, if the commission so acts to approve this, uh, noise during construction and, uh, heavy vehicle traffic such as concrete trucks coming onto the island, of which at times there'll be many, uh, you know, that it not be scheduled for weekends, uh, and, and periods when, uh, you know, uh, it would be, be maximum disturbance to the adjacent Has a traffic study ever been done for, for, by the, by the church?
Rufus Allen did a traffic study in 2004 and again, uh, in 2018 and we cooperated with him. 2004, we, uh, you could assume that we had about 23% of the traffic that went past the guardhouse and then past the, uh, causeway. The one thing that's not accurate in that is, doesn't count the people who live on Mason's Island and then come over to, uh, to Ender's Island. But basically, we're 23% in 2004. 2018, we're about 21%. There's been an overall increase on the traffic on, on Mason's Island, especially down Chippichuck Road, because the number of houses on Mason's Island have increased. And the services that people on Mason's Island, um, you know, UPS, FedEx, DHL, um, uh, lands, uh, what do you call it? Land services or yard services, the construction of a number of houses. So overall, the traffic has increased, but our percentage has kind of stayed stable.
Okay. Was any traffic work done by BSC in conjunction with this project?
No, we, we, uh, we kind of have relied on the 2018 because that's, uh, what is being used in court. The, the 2004 and the 2018, uh, studies that are involved in the, in the, uh, private zoning action that we've been involved in for the last five years.
You gave such a good explanation, I'm, I'm going to ask a sort of a traffic engineering question now to, to you. I'm sorry to impose on you. Uh, but was, were there, um, actual vehicular counts that were made?
Yes.
You know, the traffic counters were set out and they drove over the loops and...
Counts were set out. Yes. And Rufus, Rufus, we didn't, uh, we didn't do the counts. Rufus did the counts. And then we also had a, uh, because of the court, uh, we had a traffic fellow, um, expert come and do a report for, for the court. Also, um, before we started, uh, the seawall project, we had videos taken of the roads from, um, the first causeway going on to Mason's Island from the mainland all the way to...
Pre-construction surveys of the roads?
Yeah, we took actually videos and we're going to give a...
But they were, they were to assess the condition of the road prior to construction?
Right. So, so that if anybody says that, you know, the roads were damaged by, uh, construction, we can have something to, um, compare. We're going to give a, a stick with all the pictures to, um, Mason's Island Property Owners Association so that they have it before we start.
Okay, thank you. I, I'd actually like to see the, uh, traffic studies from 2018 again. I wasn't on the board then. I don't think any of us were.
Yeah, we, um, our, our litigators have copies of that. We can, we can get those for you.
That'll be great. Thank you, Father.
Welcome.
I've been doing this for a long time.
So have I.
Can I, uh, Chuck, can I just follow up about like...
Absolutely.
Because I've kind of lost my place a little bit.
Please do.
Um, so you're going to add a couple parking, parking, uh, places. And again, you showed, uh, lampposts?
lamps.
Yeah. Wasn't there a lamppost in your thing?
It looks like a lamppost that's inside of, inside of all.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. Because I couldn't figure out where they were. Okay. So you're not going to have any lampposts?
No. Uh, there's one existing, I believe.
There is one existing one, they're not touching.
Okay, but you're not adding?
Nope, nope. The intention was truly low level light.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Staff report?
Not going to belabor some of the discussions that we've already had. It's all pretty much captured in my report. Um, I'll say that the EDRB again did approve this project with the stipulation to revise the landscaping plan, uh, to address pathways following the demolition of structures. Basically, you know, what that's going, planting is going to look like, if there are going to be new permeable pathways. Um, so that was captured already. All of the FAR documentations already have been captured. Um, I'll work with the applicant to make sure that those are ironed out per the comments received from the commission. We did discuss the additional items related to the, uh, SLR report as well as the, um, engineering report from CLA. We'll work again with the applicant, the civil, to make sure that the flood, uh, the flood weight is not being introduced with the basement of the project. And then what was also captured in the report was the deep comments, um, which largely captured no significant concern to coastal waterways. And then just for the benefit of everyone else, especially the commission, um, staff has been keeping track of the, uh, letters opposing and letters in support that we've received. Uh, largely, these have come over the past 24 hours, but a few have come before. So just for the commission's knowledge, and I have those with me if there's interest in reviewing them. Um, as of 2:30 this afternoon, we have received 56 letters in opposition and 24 letters of support, um, those with varying degrees of detail. So those can be provided at the commission's request.
Any other comments? Any questions of Clifton? Okay, then we'll, we'll, any, anything else from the applicant before we open it up to the... up to the audience?
No.
Okay. Um, we'll move to, uh, speakers. Now, we have quite a few speakers here, so I'm gonna ask, I'm not gonna time anybody or try to ask anybody to sit down. I'm, I'm not gonna do that. But if you could, um, move through your remarks as quickly as possible, that would be greatly appreciated, cause I'm sure there'll be rebuttal and we want everybody to have an opportunity to, uh, go back and forth as many times as they would like. So, uh, Attorney Amy Suchans, I'm sorry if I mispronounce that.
Yes, that's right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was one of the letters that was submitted. Uh, I asked that it be distributed electronically to the commission. I think some of the questions that you raised were outlined in my letter. I have hard copies if anybody would like a hard copy and didn't get it via email. Happy to pass those out. And then I do have, um, just a short annotation on, frankly, some of the questions that you also raised about the, uh, proposed structure analysis. So happy to give anybody whatever they need out of the.
That would be very helpful. The digital form would be excellent. And if you would just state your name, uh, for the record and add.
And I, and I do believe that that was sent out via email earlier today, um, from Adriana.
I read the letter, I read the letter. I didn't know that. Okay.
Yeah, it came out at 3:15.
Yeah, that'd be great if I could just have a.
It came out at 3:15. There was very little time to digest it all.
That's this March 18th letter we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Yeah, we all did get it.
Uh, so my name is Amy Suchans. I'm an attorney, uh, with Hurwitz, Zager and Swasbournenoff with offices in Milford. Uh, I'm here representing a number of property owners on Mason's Island. Like I said at the start, I think you heard a number of the, raised a number of the questions and issues that we had with respect to the application materials. I think most importantly, given that this is a site plan application, the questions that you've raised with respect to the size of the island and the proper, uh, calculation for the denominator of the floor area ratio was one of the questions we raised. Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, direct you, you raised the question about, um, whether it was mean high water or coastal jurisdiction, uh, under section 12.9B of your regulations. It's the coastal jurisdiction line.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that line is shown and I, I don't think that there's been any, uh, calculation made in accordance with that. So we, we certainly do appreciate, um, you raising that issue as well. Um, and the numerator on that analysis is also important. The proposed structure analysis that I had handed out and noted in our letter, there are two things that I wanted to point out. Uh, number one, the fact is the, um, calculation that's shown in the existing square footage, the number of 40, for, the very bottom, 40,475 square feet, um, includes the basement of St. Mary's, but that area is excluded in the proposed conditions. So the chart, um, as you can see, reflects the existing conditions, sort of with the, the two numbers comprising the total of St. Mary's Hall, right justified in that box. Um, that 754, as I said, is included in the 40,475. Um, but when you look at it in the non, it's, it's included in the non-contributing square feet.
Right.
So what I did was just on the bottom, I, I took out the total numbers in both columns without St. Mary's. And then when you add and make the more accurate comparison, St. Mary's with the basement and without the basement, there's actually an additional square footage of 725 square feet. You've certainly heard representations from the applicant this evening that that's not their intention, but unfortunately, that's what the application materials are reflecting, an increase in the non-conforming use and non-conforming square footage. So I do think that before this application, um, could be properly approved by this commission, um, and frankly, properly evaluated, you need to understand both components of the floor area ratio, uh, consideration. Um, and then I think also with respect to, that very quickly ties into the question about the, uh, scope of the use. Your questions about the beds and what the uses are that are occurring, um, they're certainly, uh, reflected in the function portion of this chart. They are, there is some narrative accompanying that, but I do think particularly given the ongoing issues with the, um, questions about compliance, questions about what is in fact the use as it stands here today, as it was allowed, uh, when it became a non-conforming use. I don't think there is any particularly clear documentation about what that is. And I would encourage the commission, as noted in my letter, to really outline specifically in those charts and in the materials, uh, so we can avoid some of the confusion. And frankly, what I think has been nibbling around the edges on the part of St. Enders, um, St. Edmunds over the years. And I think where that becomes particularly clear was also the question about the parking lot. Um, one of the things I want to know, uh, I did not include specifically a copy of the 2018, um, zoning compliance report that your prior staff had prepared. I do think it's important that that be included in the record and I would feel, encourage you to go back and look at some of the, um, considerations there, because in fact, one of the things in there was this question about what the floor area ratio is and what's previously been allowed or not allowed on the property, um, over the years. And I think one of those examples, um, frankly, one of the best examples, is what has happened with the parking lot. Uh, as the question was raised earlier about what is in fact approved on the site and what was proposed, we heard that what was originally included in the application materials on the site plan that showed 55 parking spaces, um, has apparently now been withdrawn. They're not intending to, uh, make those improvements. But I do think that calculation in that sheet is particularly relevant because it shows you what the applicant thinks that parking lot can accommodate. And the real reason that's relevant is if you look back at, um, what we included as, uh, Exhibit C. And that's what I understand to be the operative site plan for this property, for Enders Island in its totality, um, is from the year 2000, was submitted in connection, um, at least in some way with the chapel construction and, and potentially the variance at the time that sets the maximum floor area. And as you know, and frankly, as the applicant's attorney noted earlier, it does reflect that existing parking was 27 spaces in the year 2000. And that's consistent with, um, the coastal aerial that we provided, uh, as Exhibit D in our application, or excuse me, in my letter. And you can see in that aerial that there's a fairly narrow band of parking that was approved, that was in place in 2000 and what's reflected on the site plan. When you look at Exhibit E and frankly, what's in the materials before you tonight, that parking lot at some point between 2000 and 2004 was expanded and quite dramatically by estimates using Google Maps and such, um, probably by another 50 to 100 feet. And so obviously, what you can see based on the materials that were initially part of this application, what was originally proposed and approved as 27 parking spaces can easily accommodate at least 55 today. And what you see in our final exhibit in, um, uh, the aerial photos is that over the years, those are from 2018, pre-date COVID and any kind of changes to some of that activity, even that amount of parking is not sufficient for the activities that have occurred at Enders Island over the years. So what we think is very important, number one, is certainly for this commission to have an understanding of, uh, what the proposed parking plan is today, whether that has ever been approved by the commission, and whether that is intended to be part of this application, um, whether it is frankly, in our opinion, a zoning violation. Uh, and certainly if it is a zoning violation and given that we can't find an operative approval that modified that 2000 plan, uh, to reflect the larger parking lot, um, we would submit that that's a zoning violation as it exists today and certainly should not be, any site plan application can't be approved, uh, with a zoning violation on the property. Um, I think with that, the, the number of other things that I had highlighted in my letter were frankly related to, um, as I noted at the beginning, some of the conditions and clarifications that we would ask if you do decide to approve the application. I think clarity benefits, uh, everyone involved, whether it's the commission members, your staff, the applicant, or, uh, all of my clients and the other owners of, of Enders Island. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the application materials. Um, I certainly do look forward to hearing from the applicant as to, um, their plan to reconcile what I do see as, um, defects on the face of the application.
We'll also ask our zoning enforcement officer to comment on the, uh, status of that parking lot.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, where's my list here? Next on the list is, um, a name familiar to all, Fred Dykman. Good evening, Fred. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good to be on this side of the table.
Well, we miss you, my friend.
I, uh, I wanted to make, uh, one point in addition to, uh, Attorney Suchan's choice, uh, presentation here, and that is, uh, there's a great deal of reliance been put on the 2018 report of zoning compliance, uh, referred to, uh, and it seems, seems to have been designed to serve two purposes. The first is to explain and justify all that came before its release on Enders Island as pre-existing non-conforming under our zoning regulations, especially as to uses. And secondly, to serve as a baseline that every, for everything that has occurred since, including this application. There are, however, those of us who believe that the 2018 report contains significant errors and attempts to challenge that report have been turned away by the town and by the Zoning Board of Appeals, meaning there's never been any public discussion of the merits of that report. So we have a basic underlying question of, of the, uh, entire usage of Enders Island. It's certainly not what it was 60 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Good to see you. Next on the list is, uh, Mr. Frank Marco. Good evening, Frank. Good to see you again.
Pardon?
Good to see you again.
Yes, same here. Thank you. Um, first, uh, before I start, uh, one thing I wanted to clarify or amplify, the question about number of cars and traffic was raised. To me, the issue is not the percentage. The percentage of residences has gone up, but that is consistent with the RCA 120 zoning. It's zone residential. So that's been a zoning compliant increase. What's relevant is that there are 200 cars a day on average that are going to Enders Island. 17,000 visitors a day, it says on their website, uh, a year, uh, on their website. That's what bothers me. Now, let me get to my main point. Something has come up in the context of the litigation that is relevant to, to what we're talking about that I think you should be aware of. Uh, I think as you're all aware, there's a, there's an action pending in Superior Court in Connecticut that's been brought by Mason's Island residents against, uh, St. Edmund's retreat. Now, in a, uh, there was a motion made by St. Edmund's, uh, that the plaintiffs did not have standing. In the context of, the, the judge ruled on that and, uh, the judge's, um, decision is, I want to quote from it. Now, it, basically in, in this type of a motion, the court, uh, uh, makes it based on undisputed facts, including stipulations. And there were a number of stipulations made by the parties. Now, these are the court's words, not mine. "The uses and activities of defendants and their invitees on Enders Island were changed without review and regulation by the Town of Stonington Zoning Authority, notwithstanding that Enders Island itself and its right-of-way are located in RC 120 residential zone. Specifically, neither St. Edmund nor the retreat sought any form of permit or confirmation of compliance or variance from the Town of Stonington for the expanded religious uses conducted on-site or for the new secular, commercial, non-residential activities that are being conducted today on Enders Island and that plaintiffs have alleged to have increased in nature and scope since 2003. While defendants argue that some or all of these facts lack legal significance, the court notes that none of them is challenged by defendants as inaccurate." So, unquote. "The litigation is still subject to trial on the merits, but I do think that the conclusions reached by the court are relevant to you and relevant to the fact that there's a history of a lack of oversight and a lack of compliance. Nobody should be immune from compliance with the law, whether it's the President or Enders Island." This has been a divisive issue in our community. Most of us would just as soon spend our money, spend our time in supporting good activities that are done in compliance with the law. All we're looking for is proper regulation and proper enforcement of zoning by the town. This will enable our community to keep its character, promote safety, and to heal. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Frank. Next person on the list is Kay Tower. Good evening, Kay.
Hello. Uh, Kay Tower, two yacht club road, Mason's Island. Um, actually, most of what I wanted to, uh, comment on has been raised, so I appreciate it. I also appreciate the opportunity of a public hearing tonight.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. One last question, though, I do want to clarify. Um, I heard that when Angel Hall, if this goes forward, is demolished, that they will, um, have no parking there. And I would want to make sure that's clarified and I'm also curious about whatever spaces are proposed adjacent to, uh, Kenyon, because obviously parking is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Next person on the list is Ethan Tower. Evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Ethan Tower, uh, also two yacht club, uh, road. Um, I'd like to be real quick. Um, my issue is really the 500-pound gorilla in the room. And everybody kind of knows what that is. It's the parking lot. Okay, we've heard from our attorney, we've heard from other people that that parking lot's been expanded from, from 27 spaces to currently, whether it's 55, 75, whatever, it has been expanded. And it was done unlawfully. There was no permits issued for that. There's no permits requested for it. It just happened. And as part of this particular application, I would really like to see that, that situation addressed and the parking brought into compliance, both physically and hopefully the, you know, the, to restrict the number of cars as low as possible to keep down the traffic. Uh, as Mr. Marco mentioned, you know, currently, the KEEP statistics, uh, the Mason, Mason's Island Fire District and Property Owners Association KEPE statistics, currently, the traffic at Enders Island runs about 200 cars a day. That's triple from what it was back, I think it was, what, 2004, 2008, whenever the initial studies were done. So that traffic has gone up to that one property by three times. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I don't want to murder this, this next name. The last name is Kenny, and it's not David. It looks like there's two Kennys that are signed up here.
You're gonna reserve your comments? The Lord's Kenny's gonna reserve her comments later.
Okay, and David, is it also Kenny?
Yes.
Evening, David.
Good evening. A pleasure to be here.
Glad to have you.
My name is David Kenny. I live at Seven Cambera and I am, uh, I attend, uh, services at, uh, Enders Island.
God bless you.
Beg pardon?
God bless you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, two points. Uh, we've been members, uh, or been living in the area since around, uh, 2017 or so. Um, to the point about parking, I personally and my wife, uh, decided not to speak right now, have, have not seen any changes in the cars or the size of that parking lot. Um, so whether things have changed or not, we personally have not seen any variation in the space, the grading, uh, of the area where cars parked leased on Sundays. All right? The second is that, uh, I do support the change that's being made. I think the idea of taking the, uh, the residents and moving them to, as is referred to, the back of the property is very, very important to maintain the, uh, the privacy of those residents that are trying to recover from an illness. So I think in all, overall, in support of, uh, this project, I'm not here to talk about whether it's 725 feet or whether it's 27 or 55 parking spaces, uh, whether it's mean high. parking spaces, uh, whether it's mean high water or the coastal zone, but I'm here to say that I think the overall concept is very, very important, uh, to the health of the community, and I would encourage the Commission to get through the issues that are being raised, and ultimately approve the plan. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of quick questions. Sir. Are you a year-round resident?
Yes.
You are, okay, and do you live on the direct route to the causeway?
I live in Bishop's Cove.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Does the applicant require, uh, any rebuttal time?
Mr. Chair, could I, could I first speak?
Certainly.
I just wanted to comment because there, there was a mention, um, from the attorney representing the Mason Island property owners, uh, that regarding the zoning enforcement officers' ongoing work, um, there is a, currently, an ongoing appeal to the ZBA, uh, that is AP 2401, um, regarding the zoning enforcement officers' findings for no violation regarding the expansion of the parking lot, um, that's been filed with the ZBA and is due to be heard on April ninth.
I was aware of that, I just want to make sure it's an official part of this record.
Yep, just speaking on that.
Thank you.
And that's included in my report as well.
Thank you. Evening again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Aravina, uh, back again. Uh, again, for the record, I do have a nice clean copy of the Ender's Island compliance report, so I'll put it in the record. Also, the, uh, certainly to the discretion of the Commission, but we, we have a number of letters that got directed to Father Tom instead of the Commission, uh, regarding the project, and I don't know whether those, they're all about the project, and whether you want those, I, I have a copy for the record.
Thank you sir.
And I was, uh, going to mention the April ninth hearing, uh, again, regarding the parking lot issue, so I think that many issues will be addressed that night, so I will certainly be in attendance, and, and we'll see what, what develops that night. Again, I was here in, in two thousand three, and I do want it on the record again, that the twenty-seven was a designated amount, that the Commission felt comfortable, we should remember to keep aside in the entire parking lot, for folks who came on the island to go to mass. It had nothing to do with the total count for that parking lot. The parking lot, physically, I think, has not changed in this location, uh, for all the years that I've been coming on and off the island and, and working on projects and being, and working on the chapel project, but we'll see how, how that goes. The, um, the last thing I would request then, uh, from our position, and let Father Tom speak, um, is that we are prepared to come back to the Commission, uh, if you choose to continue this hearing, uh, we will submit those supplementals that both Council have discussed, uh, and we'll have those to you, uh, in adequate time prior to, uh, conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you sir.
May I just ask you a question? The, uh, letters that you just submitted, um, are they all from residents of Stonington?
Um, I think they're broken out a little bit, I think there are some that participate at the island in summer, or come from different areas, so, no, I don't think they're all from, uh, particularly, but they certainly...
Is it, are they marked as such?
I think they're addressed that way, but, um, I haven't been through them all, so I, I apologize, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone who spoke previously, uh, Father, please, if you'd like rebuttal time?
Yes. I've lived on the island consistently since nineteen ninety-three. I first came to, to live on the island as a student in nineteen sixty-nine, so, in calculating it, other than someone from the Mashentucket, uh, tribe, back in the seventeen, eighteen hundreds, I've probably been the person who's lived on Ender's Island longer than any other person. So I've seen a lot of, uh, of the history. We, um, the Society of St. Edmund came in nineteen fifty-four, and, uh, and our, our neighbors, a small number of neighbors, six, um, have contested our, um, our deed, uh, compliance. And Mr. Marco, um, quoted from, uh, the motions that, uh, were just issued by the court, he didn't, um, uh, quote that, uh, the court found that they had, those six people had no standing to bring a complaint against our, um, compliance to the, to the deed issues. In a separate, um, issue, a clear, quiet title issue, uh, with a great-grandnephew, the court has recently held that our quick claim deeds are valid, and we hold ninety-six point eight-two-five percent of the reversionary interests of Alice Ender's estate. So at times, um, I think it's been disingenuous to, uh, uh, kind of say that we may lose, um, our, um, our presence on the island, or our, our, uh, our ownership of the island. We own the island. One of the things, since I've been at, uh, Ender's Island in ninety, nineteen ninety-three, tried to be good neighbors to the folks on Mason's Island. I was the one that initiated making, uh, annual donations to the road fund, to help, uh, provide, um, for, for the care of the, the roads. We've, uh, done that consistently until they, until we started having to, uh, pay a lot of, uh, legal fees for, to defend ourselves in, in lawsuits. It's interesting that many of the complaints that are made against us are not made against the yacht club, which is in a, one, uh, our 120 zone, and have all sorts of activities that are, um, have more cars than we have. We have two events during the year where we have, uh, more than a hundred cars on the island. We've been trying to be good neighbors, but at times we're, uh, we're met with, uh, real animosity and mean-spiritedness. Uh, the, the building office knows that we had a gazebo on the island since twenty-eighteen. I was told that we had applied for a, for a, a permit, somehow it never made its way to the office, so, um, our neighbors on Mason's Island complained, and so we removed it to being in compliance. Uh, and it seems that, uh, some of the folks spend an awful lot of time and money, uh, kind of hanging around, um, the records in Town Hall to see if we're in compliance with things. You know, the church has changed in sixty years, uh, the church has changed, the world has changed in the last twenty-five years. So the way we do our ministry is different, okay? The, the needs of God's people are different, the needs of, uh, the members of the, of the town are different. And we've always tried to be, uh, open and, um, uh, available to the needs of, of the town. Uh, there are a number of people who, who reside on Mason's Island and, uh, and the environs, that come to twelve-step meetings on Ender's Island. There are a number of people that come to daily mass from Mason's Island, excuse me. There's a number of people that come and walk their dogs, uh, walk our grounds, uh, pick our flowers, um, on, from that, live on Mason's Island. Um, and yet, um, we've spent probably close to a million dollars in the last four and a half, five years, defending ourselves on, on legal issues. And whether it's, um, a gazebo, or, um, you know, you're not doing what Alice Ender's wanted, or you're not doing this, uh, they, there's a group that wants to close us down. They want to, um, deplete our resources. They, I don't think they had the, um, sense that when they started all this, that we would persevere. Our petition, our application to, uh, to make a new residence for, uh, our recovery community, uh, is to upgrade the, the rooms that people live in, uh, to make it, uh, much more comfortable, much more of a communal aspect than an institutional aspect. Uh, there are many people on Mason's Island who have upgraded their, um, homes and properties over the last several decades, and nobody's kind of dragged them through the mud. We, we come here with a great desire to comply with all of the zoning, and with, our staff has worked very hard with, uh, with the, uh, office, um, the zoning and building office folks. But I would ask that the, um, Commission understand that what we're doing on Ender's Island changes people's lives. We have a, a young man who has his own company here in, in Mason, in, uh, Stonington, uh, who's a mason, and he does wonderful work, and this winter we helped him, um, uh, get an apprenticeship to learn how to do stone carving, and some of the things he's learned, uh, to carve are just fantastic. Uh, he's, he's married, he has two children, he has a, a business here in Stonington. Uh, when he came to us, he was a, uh, he was addicted, had no hope, had no future. That's what we're doing, and that's why we want to have a building where we have the, uh, all of them together in a, uh, a safe environment, a, a modern environment, um, and so when we come before you, we come with, with a, with a great desire to, uh, continue to do our ministry, and to do it in conformity with town rules and regulations. But, um, what has been going on for the last four or five years, uh, has been an infringement on our, um, constitutional rights to exercise our faith and our, our religion. And, um, and I think that's, that needs to be taken into account. People want me, uh, to, to take some action against these people, the action I take is every day I pray for them, and I ask other people to pray for them, and to pray that God will bless them according to their need, and according to God's will, not mine, but to God's will. And so when, when, um, you know, we, we struggle with flurry area ratio, we're an island. We're, we're, whether we're a nine-point-seven acre island, or a ten-point-three acre island, or an eleven-point-two acre, we're an island, we got lots of empty space. We got lots of empty space. I think if you go back into the history of, um, zoning, you probably zoned us wrong. You, you probably should have zoned us in a different way than, um, than, uh, than a, our 120. But we are what we are.
We are doing the P O C D over again in the near future, so you may want to save that argument for, for the new P O C D.
Oh, I will, I will, I will. But, uh, please know that we're trying to do everything that the town's asking us to do, but I think there's some mean-spirited people that are trying to, um, uh, undermine our exercise of our ministry and our free expression of our faith, so...
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone who previously spoke, uh, either in favor or against, like, any additional rebuttal time?
I can't sit here and listen to you call mean-spirited...
Frank, Frank, please, uh, this isn't, you, you can address your comments to the board, and, let's, let's keep it businesslike if we can, okay?
I, I think what I've just heard is that because of the good works, I'm not doubting the good works that are being done...
Please address the board.
Yes, not doubting the good works, therefore, the law shouldn't apply. I just read from a court opinion where they talked about the fact that the town has done nothing over the years, very little, and we've had these activities, these non-religious, these secular activities, all sorts of things grow by leaps and bounds. That's what we're concerned about, we're not mean-spirited, we want to live and let live, but that means, that's a two-way street, and up until now, we feel like we've had our noses thumbed at us. Thank you.
Just, just for the record Frank, uh, you know, we're all, we're all here... We're all here on our own time this evening, and, uh, this board brings a lot of expertise to the table, and, um, we're focused on the regulations, and the regulations apply equally to everybody, and I, I hope that our conduct on this application has demonstrated that to you. And, and also to everyone from Ender's Island, everybody gets treated fairly here. And, and the regulations apply equally. I don't know how it's been in the past, but that's how it is tonight, and that's how it'll be as long as I'm sitting in this chair. Uh, anyone else like, any rebuttal time? Anyone else like to say a word on this application that hasn't spoken yet? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Len Matano, my wife, Sue and I live at one eighty-four Mason's Island Road, so we're just outside the gated area. Um, and I, um, we moved here in two thousand nine, um, not five percent, I'll address my comments to you, not five percent of the traffic, ten percent of the traffic, fifty or eighty percent of the traffic, but one hundred percent of the traffic onto Mason's Island gated area goes by my house. And I stand in support of Ender's. I have no issue with the respectful use of the roadway leading up to the private area. There are, as Father Tom mentioned, innumerable cars, trucks, service vehicles, et cetera, that go past my house. I walk to church pretty much daily, um, in time for morning mass, and I frequently have to get off of the road because of residents who are driving quite a bit above the twenty mile-per-hour, um, speed limit. So, two-way street, I'm in one direction, I guess there are others who are in another. Sitting from the back of the room, I, as a neighbor, did not appreciate seeing smirks, shrugs, winks, jeers, and other comments that were being made silently in this room as, uh, Father Tom was speaking, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. If no one else has any comments, uh, what's the Commission's pleasure with you? I'm sorry, please come forward, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bob Ward. I live in, I live in Ashway, Rhode Island, but I am one of those who benefited from the recovery community at Ender's Island. Almost nineteen years ago, I went there to live, a total mess, a total wreck. Um, I'm clean and sober today, almost nineteen years later, because of the works of Ender's Island. And when I lived there in two thousand five, the parking lot was the same size it is now, maybe it is even smaller now, because of all the rock that has come in to be built, to be used on the wall, it has been stored there, much of that rock came from Mason's Island actually, too. So the parking lot has not changed, at least since two thousand five. All we're, at Ender's Island, all we're trying to do is to make things better for those who are in recovery, we're not asking for more, we're not asking to, uh, make anything larger. Maximilian Colby, there's the patron saint of addiction, and he always said, "Do the next right thing." That's what we're trying to do for our clients, the people that come to Ender's Island, that's what we hope you'll do for us, and that's what we hope the people at Mason Island will see, that we're there to help, we're not there to fight with them. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Patty Ludwig, and I live at Three Yacht Club Road, and most of the traffic going to Ender's has to go by my house. In the summer, I have my three grandchildren living with me because their parents work full-time, so I'm the, I'm the next best thing that they have. And I'm sort of concerned to learn about the major construction that's going to happen because there's a downhill to the yacht club, which we belong to, where my children have to go, grandchildren, and there are no sidewalks, and I would like you, if possible, somebody addressed it before, about rocks and things on the roads, and, and trash that comes from breaking up rocks, or whatever they're gonna do, and building construction, detress, and things like that, detrius. Uh, I would like that to be thought of, how they can keep that to a minimum, where my kids ride scooters and bicycles down to the yacht club, and hopefully will stop, cross the crosswalk, and get into the grassy area, but that is a concern of mine. I, not as concerned with what you're doing or why you're doing it, but if... I'm not as concerned with what you're doing or why you're doing it, but if it is allowed, if you would address those issues. We do have a substantial amount of kids that ride bikes, not only to the yacht club, but visiting Ender's, so we would appreciate that you would address that kind of a thing because there is no room for a sidewalk. The kids have to go down the hill, and you know kids, they're going fast down the hill and slow when they're coming home. So if you could look at those things, we'd appreciate it, whether it's by time or there was a track pad or something mentioned that they could put in. Will that really stop the rocks or things from kids having accidents on the roads? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We may want to make a note to ourselves, we may want to make a note to ourselves that maybe some sort of a sweeping program or something should be considered in addition to the sediment erosion control pad and anti-tracking pad that's included in the project. If there's no one else that wants to speak, what's the commission's pleasure? Ben, did you have a question?
No, I have one, just want to make sure the applicant is comfortable with the CLA engineering reports, number 1 through 12 can be met. And you think they, you feel a dialogue with them, or you'll be able to-
We need to review the comments, and we agree with all of you prepared to respond. You guys are on the record.
Perfect, thank you very much.
So I think we have a number of open issues here. The applicant has suggested that the application be tabled, and I just want to make sure that we know what we can expect coming back. There was the A2 survey question, the detailed matrix that was brought up by Lynn that talks about the pre-existing uses in areas and bedrooms, and the ultimate final destination of all those uses in the new, in the new buildings, and that the two should add up. You may have some adjustments to make based upon floor area ratio and the ultimate area of this parcel. I did notice that the area is stated on the Surenzia map that was included with the attorney who spoke this evening. Amy's letter has a copy of the map with the area on it, and I'm sure you have the area as well, but that could have changed between the surveys, as we know. The terms avulsion and alluvium are two things where islands get added to and subtracted to gradually, and their areas change, and the legal boundaries change with alluvium and avulsion. So what it is today is, or what it is in the data survey is what it will be, and that's what we're looking for, for the record. So, does anybody have anything else that-
I think we also wanted to ask for, as you brought up, the phased plan-
Phasing plan, correct.
Phasing plan, and how that would also mesh with the seawall plan.
That's in the CLA report.
That is in there, okay, okay.
Is it integrated with, is it integrated with the seawall plant?
No.
The phasing? I think it, I think what we need to see is an integrated, since two major projects are going to be going on, at least for a period concurrently, we need to see the concurrent phasing of both projects.
I also had some questions regarding the lighting on the new building in comparison to what's there. I totally understand that, you know, you don't have this, might not have the specifications of the current lighting, just, you know, in general, in your professional, you know, knowledge, because it is right on the water, and it does reflect off, and it does make a difference. So I think knowing that is important. You know, we don't want it to look like a commercial, you know, low lighting, even though it's low, you know, just having that information be helpful.
Anyone else have any comments? Clifton?
I just captured a couple other items regarding potential narrative updates. A copy of the traffic reports from 2004 and 2018 to be included in the record. We have the 2018 zoning compliance report now in the record, mainly other items regarding noise, traffic, dust, debris, et cetera, that were raised. That can be included narrative-wise, so I've been keeping a running list, and I'll work with the applicant on getting those addressed.
And the zoning enforcement officers' report about the ongoing lawsuits that they got to them?
The zoning enforcement officers' report, I think, given some of the conversations, the ongoing superior court case might be worth including in the record as well because that's a lot more extensive than what's been mentioned tonight, so I think that might be worth including in terms of keeping in the record as well, and I'll work with Attorney Avina on getting that done.
Any questions from the applicant on any of those items?
No, just trying to-
Yeah, that's what I was just going to discuss now. When would we, this would be tabled till when?
I know, I was going to ask, Clifton, because I know there's the zoning board of appeals that I think is being heard on April 9th.
Correct. Yep, April 9th. The public hearing, as stated in the report, it must be closed by April 23rd. That would be the next regular meeting of the commission. There is a special meeting earlier, prior to the 9th in April. I would anticipate tabling until then, and then utilizing any extension time per state statute after that, if the public hearing needs to further be extended. So I'd probably say that next regular meeting in April.
So it would be till the 23rd, then?
That will be-
23rd.
April 23rd on the dot, yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion from the board to table?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this hearing and adjourn-
Sorry, April 16th.
April 16th?
April 16th.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing until the next regular meeting, April 16th.
Motion to table till April 16th. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, thank you, Lynn.
I second. I would just like to clarify for the general public that we're not closing-
Correct.
-the public meeting, so there will be a chance to speak.
The hearing will start again on April 16th.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I want to, for the board perhaps, I'm just thinking in my mind, 16 days, 15 days, how much time do we have to get the changes in so that you're comfortable with the decision? Because we have a lot more.
Good question.
Sorry, my mic's- Updated documentation during an open public hearing is only five days prior to, not, five calendar days, I'm pretty sure, according to state statute.
It could be like the 11th, April 11th.
And I, and I will separately verify that, so that might remain open.
Second of the acquit?
If we need additional time.
There's available extension time under statute, yep, correct. And that, and that will be notified to the general public as part of the process, so it would be included in the report. Then an extension request was filed, and the next date will be noted ahead of that April 16th meeting.
Thank you.
So we do have a motion.
Any further discussion for the motion? Are any of them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. We have two other items on the agenda under new submittals. They're both public hearings unless anybody has a comment.
Just, would be a motion to accept those applications as new submittals? That's my new request moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept both those new applications listed on the agenda as new submittals for public hearing.
To accept the items under item nine, seconded by Lynn. Any discussion?
Could members of the public please be quiet exiting the room?
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Motion made to adjourn, no second required. All in favor?
Aye.
Any adjourn?